Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, August 27th, 2024, meeting of the Air Planning Board. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 833-6548-0732 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at D R U I Z at air dot M A dot U S or 978-772-8220, extension 144 prior to the meeting. First order of business is to approve the agenda. I'd like to make two suggestions. One is I'd like to invert the public hearings for Scully Road and Stratton Hill. Start with Stratton, close, it's a real quick thing, and then we can dedicate the bulk of our time to Zero Scully Road. And the other change is that during the project status update, I'd like to tell the board about the ADU webinar that Barrett Associates hosted this afternoon. That said, I'd like to-
Approve the agenda with the changes suggested by the Chair?
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the first thing is the continued public hearing for, off Wright Road, for Stratton Hill, map six parcels 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 11 through 55. And we have a request for continuance. Jeff, would you be so kind?
Thank you. We received a letter from Attorney Robert L. Collins on August 12th, 2024, to the Air Planning Board, Town Hall 1, Main Street, ARMS 01432, regarding Fox Metta Realty Corporation, Multi-Construction Corporation, Locust, Stratton Hill, definitive subdivision Wright Road. Dear Board members, we are in receipt of the peer review comments and those from the Public Works Department. Frank Partland and the engineers from Dillison Roy are working on responses with an aim to have them submitted to both the DPW and Green International by the 26th. I would thus like to request that the hearing be continued to the meeting on September 10th. This will provide sufficient time for Green to review the responses and Dillison Roy to provide whatever further revisions may be needed. We can also go over the responses with the Department of Public Works to make certain their concerns are addressed. Kindly also consider this letter as a request that the time by which the board must complete its hearings and file the decision on this matter be extended until September 30th, 2024. Thanking the board for its time and consideration, I remain very truly yours, Robert L. Collins.
Thank you.
Just before we get to the motion, so just so the board knows, this has been timestamped, posted on the wall, like for the extensions that they're supposed to go.
Good.
As well as, we will be having a meeting tomorrow with the DPW and the representatives for Stratton Hill to go through some of the comments that the peer review and DPW had. So at the September 10th meeting, we'll have Green International there as well, here, to help, you know, answer any questions that may come up.
Okay, great. So I need a motion for the continuance, right? For the next meeting?
You're so good at this, Jeff. May I pose upon-
To continue further letter from Attorney Collins to the, for Stratton Hill definitive subdivision Wright Road, to the September 10th Planning Board meeting.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Let's go.
So this 20-day difference between the 10th and the 30th, that's been consistent throughout the extensions that we've given them?
They've, they varied month, two months.
I'm getting it's not become 30 to 20 to-
No, 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 they varied.
If I, if I was wrong and it could be up base-
No.
They picked like the end of the current month-
Mm-hmm.
-just to keep extending it out. I don't-
Yeah.
I, I think it's just-
Sometimes depending on when they were asking the, from the continuance for, some of the times the extension was longer, sometimes they were shorter depending on what month they were asking the continuance from.
I think, if I may, I think what he's basing it on, where the work is being done. So if Dillison Roy needs more time and DPW needed time, he was giving us longer, longer extensions at those points, but, you know.
I just want to make sure that when we go to the next meeting, we have the option of extending that.
We have two, so we'll have two meetings prior to the, this running out. Just, so we have the September 10th meeting, we have the September 24th meeting. We can always, if, and remember, if you request a contin-, if the applicant request a continuance on themselves, that is by a fact them extending the time for you to act to that next meeting.
I'm just always concerned when they put a day, a positive date in there.
We always, so that's how it's always been, and that's why we've been keeping track of them on the wall. For every time it's been extended, we put a new one up, take down the old one.
Okay. Everyone else comfortable with, you know, the idea?
Yep.
Right?
Okay, good.
I just don't think we'll make it by September 30th. I doubt it very much.
Well, we'll get there. No, well, I mean, last time, so the, the extension for the previous one before this was July 31st. So they, or August 31st, so they had already requested-
They're just moving it a month at a time, roughly.
Yeah, so they're just, they keep, they've been moving it depending on where they were with the peer review, where they were with providing comments. The first extension, or one of the extensions they provided in like April was for June. So it's like, it really varies on what they see of how many, how many meetings and what needs to be done.
But if you remember, in April, they would bring us new plans, and they weren't going to get completed until July at that point.
Correct.
Yeah. I think, I actually think, I think, I believe Attorney Collins, and I think he said to us, "The extensions are here, but I'm always open to consideration of what the board requests."
Okay.
So.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
There you go. Aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Oh, so the, we need a, a formal motion to open the public hearing. So I move that we open the public hearing for Zero Scully Road, map 33, parcel three, site plan review, and major stormwater management permit.
Point of origin. Do we have to, do we read the announcement, the advertisement before we make that motion or after?
So-
Or after we make the motion?
We don't have to read the announcement because I have the information that's basically on the announcement on, and the legal notice doesn't have to be read into the record because it's already part of the record, but if you guys want to, I can print it out for you. It's not a-
Okay.
I think it's redundant, it's not good. Okay. So there's a motion at table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Aye. Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye.
So we're opening-
Zero Scully.
Both the site plant and the major stormwater, did you read that, what we said?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thanks.
The way this is going to work, the Town Planner, Danny, will set this up. And then we're going to turn to the applicant. Applicant will do a narrative. We open to the board for comment and questions, and then if there's any public here who would like to comment, they will be allowed to, invited to come up and make their comments. So Danny, give us the, give us the background.
All right. So in May, we had a, our pre-application meeting with the applicant and the engineers, just to kind of, as part of our site plan review process. At that meeting, we had some discussions about the plans and the use. There was a little back and forth between the applicant's attorney and Charlie, the building commissioner, on the use and the caretaker's unit within the, on the property. That was settled, and Charlie had issued that caretaker's unit could be accessory used to the warehouse.
May I ask, Danny?
Yes.
When you say it's settled by the building commissioner, does that mean that, that's not available for discussion at this board?
We can discuss it. I, I know there was some questions about the size of the caretaker's unit and whether or not it's considered an accessory dwelling, an accessory unit use, or it's really more, but that's open to discuss. But Charlie did opine on it, and I am going to be discussing, bringing that to Charlie's for him to be able to provide the board with the information that the board needs. So they made their application. Based on the, the application and our pre-application meeting, they, they had addressed a lot of the concerns that myself and Heather, DPW, had raised during that initial meeting. So when they came in with this, with the news, with the application that you see before us, there was minimal comments that came in. There were some that was from the DPW, some that came in from Conservation, and I did not have any comments because they had addressed all my comments during the pre-application. And I believe Fire had another, had a comment as well. The applicant did provide a response letter to all of those, and they did include the comments from MAS DEP. They've applied for an NOI through Conservation, so they're in the process with that as well, and that was continued to 26th.
26th.
26th. So they've already had a meeting through Conservation, right? And so at this point, if you'd like-
And there's four waiver requests.
Yes, and there is, there are four waiver requests, which I can quickly go through So on the site plan, you'll see, and there's also within the application. So it's, the first one is from Site Plan Regulations, Section 4E2, which is to provide a traffic impact statement details. This is a small property, small project, really very minimal traffic in and out. So the applicant has requested a waiver. The next one is Site Plan Regulations, Section 4F3, Site Plan Application, Section 3, which is the, provide bicycle parking accommodation within the site. This site is a commercial use for, they're going to do fire sprinkler monitoring as well as warehouse. So this is not going to be a site that will be really getting pedestrian, you know, any retail, there's no retail here, so it's, it's not a site that will need bicycle parking. And then Site Plan Regulations, Section 4G2, Site Plan Application, Section 3, so provide photometric plan for the outdoor lighting based on that. So the applicant is only going to be having lights on the, on the building, which are down dark sack compliant. So based on the uses also, also that there's really, there's really nothing around this site. There are a couple abutters across the street, but they are proposing some landscaping buffer around the, along Scully Road, so I don't see that as an impact as well as a, during the night, it's not like they're going to be on all night. So that's the other waiver that they're requesting. And then the last one is from the local stormwater management bylaw, and that's the, the waiver from Section 210B, which is the easement for the town to be able to maintain the stormwater. But since this is a private site and will remain private, they're, they're requesting a waiver that's, which it states in the bylaw.
And I just wanted to say for the record that I do appreciate that in the application, there were clear reasons for each of the waiver requests, and that's the right way to do it, and thank you. So if you two would introduce yourselves, and then whoever's taking the lead on it, I imagine it'd be you, Limut.
Yep.
Feel free, you have the floor. But both of you, if you could give us your name and addresses, please.
Certainly. Limut, GPR.
Paul Joy, I'm the owner of Commercial Fire and the Property.
Paul Joy?
Yeah, Joy, J O Wiley. Joy to the world.
Excellent. Welcome, welcome.
And I believe the, the property, as well as the applicant name, is under Commercial Fire Systems.
Commercial Fire Systems.
Which Paul is the, the owner of. So we'll, we'll jump straight into it. I think Danny summarized a lot about the project already, but I'll just go straight to the existing site. So the existing property is an existing light industrial zoning district, and as you can see, located across the street are a row of residential houses. On the south and southeastern corner, you have the, you know, town of Devon Landville.
Mm-hmm.
And north of the property, you have the, you know, obviously the driveway going into Park, as well as the, the Brook, which names I can never pronounce, located on there.
Corcus.
Not a corcus. We have, we have delineated the wetland bordering the, the Brook, as well as provided Zone AE, which is the 100-year floodplain associated with the Brook. As you can see here, we actually drafted the line in based on the elevation provided by FEMA MAP. A little bit tough to see here, let me see if I can zoom in. Elevation 220.8. So, you know, as you know, as soon as you mess with 100-year floodplain, you have to provide compensatory flood storage and, you know, all the, all the pelts and whistles with it. So jumping into the site plan itself, the proposed building is a commercial use that has warehouse and interior storage for this portion you see here. And attached on the north side is the proposed residential dwelling. As Danny had mentioned, we had gone and had this discussion with Charlie about what is allowed by right under industrial use, and he made a determination which allowed us to provide the residential dwelling as an attachment to the warehouse use. The, there will be a proposed driveway that comes off of, in the same general area as this existing stub. I think it's a park that parks there regularly. So we'll be providing a 20-foot wide driveway come down, brings you to the back of the site. There we'll have-
So I didn't mean to, but one of the things I'm puzzled about is, I see the warehouse. I see the dwelling.
Yep.
Right, the caretaker. Where does the monitoring take place on this? The actual mon-, I imagine monitors, displays, giving you input on where-
There is a-
As far as the alarm monitor?
Yeah, yeah, the alarm monitor, which is the purpose of this.
It's an office.
Is it, so is it on here, or is it-
It's inside architectural?
It is. Okay.
It's on the architectural.
There's a floor plan there.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm curious. It's connected to the master bedroom, too. I thought that was interesting.
Okay, I'm sorry, please continue, Limut.
He's the guy who did his work.
So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the, the monitoring room. So I think this portion here-
I also have the, the application open on, in another page that you can look at it in.
Oh, it's on the second floor of that section?
It's in the main hall, yeah. So right above the, the garage there, really.
Oh, okay, so it's above it. You gotcha.
And there's a fire pole in there, too.
So I'll speak to that a little bit. You know, Paul had worked for fire department for, you know, over decades, 35 years.
I'm retired lieutenant out of Bedford, Mass.
So, you know, being a fire, been a fire department for 35 years, he has, you know, antique fire trucks that he want to keep in this garage bay here. So obviously we made sure to give him enough room for getting the vehicle in and out. So to kind of continue about the, the parking, the driveway comes down, goes to the back of the site. We are providing six parking spaces at the back here, as well as two for the two-bay garage bay over here. As you can see, we provided snow storage as well as a little bit of a riprap area at the end of this driveway. So, you know, relatively steep driveway, we're going to be cutting it a bit, it's not going to be as steep as the existing. As you're coming down, there's going to be sufficient room for the plow to push the snow to this spot here and have it melt, and then, you know, drain through the riprap, gets into the sediment four bay. And we're also providing snow storage at the back of the parking lot, parking area here. Really, those are the only two locations that make sense for a plow to kind of go through and push to, and place them, so that it can melt and then get into the basin. As Danny had mentioned, we, we are providing a lot of planting. As you can see at the front here, you have a row of apovites, really shielding the, the commercial portion of the proposed building to the residential dwellings across the street. And as part of, you know, work inside the buffer limit, we are removing some trees. And per Town of Air Conservation Regulations, we're supposed to provide replacement planting. If you're doing tree to tree, it's one to one or one to three shrubs. We had asked that during the approval stage or as part of the approval condition, for, for the planting, we'll work with the Concom agent to actually go out there, stake the 100-foot buffer, figure out how many trees were taken out, and then provide the appropriate amount of planting. I think we are providing some already, but Paul has no problem, you know, increasing that number, just so we can match it. To mitigate for all the proposed impervious on-site, we're providing infiltration chambers that have been located in the backyard. This set of chambers will take in the wrecked roof discharge from the building, and anything that's not captured by the roof discharge will get picked up by the sediment four bay into the infiltration basin back here. So let me jump to the next page. As you can see, you know, everything is directed from the top of the driveway there, coming down. And we try to minimize the amount of grading that we do on-site so that we're, we're staying outside of this 100-year floodline, so we're not touching the floodplain at all. And-
Excuse me, the phone. Can you just expand the magnification on that, just right where it sits? Thank you. I just couldn't figure out the slope, I couldn't read the numbers from him.
So we try to stay out of the 100-year floodplain, and as you can see right here, this is where we have the 50-foot no disturb wetland buffer limit, which we're also staying far away from. I want to say at the closest distance is, you know, probably right around here, about 15 feet. So minimal disturbance, I would say, and it's strictly just for the grading associated with the basin itself.
And the infiltration is basically going to be in the yard, subsurface in the yard?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading this. Where's the, the actual drain itself? Where's, where's the water going to get to the infiltration basin? Where's the actual?
So-
Help me with my vocabulary.
The roof drain.
Yeah.
It's RD. It's called RD right there, yeah. And then the overflow is to the right and goes out.
Yep.
And there's a structure there to keep me clean.
So the water, what about the water from the impervial-
That was sheet.
It's sheet flow.
That was sheet flow onto the riprap.
Oh, I see. Okay.
You're going so fast, man.
I don't know. It's just sheet flow, okay.
Yep, it'll sheet flow into the basin.
Please feel free to stop me anytime.
But, but if I'm, if I understood you to be, you're going to capture all the water on the structure into the infiltration bay.
Yes.
Anything that falls on the property, not on the structure, will sheet off and is handled by riprap.
It's going to go into the sediment four bay.
Sediment four bay.
And then go over the four bay spillway into the basin.
Got it.
Yep, right here.
You see the arrows?
Yep.
Oh, I see.
It's going to come from here and then fill up.
Thank you.
And then this is, this is the overs, the spillway.
Okay, thank you.
So when we were out there doing soil testing for the drainage system, we do have great, great sand material out there, so very well-draining sand.
Some of this down rocks, man.
It's rare to come by a site like these now. But anyway, the spillway that we provided is an actual emergency spillway. I think, believe during 100-year storm, it doesn't actually overtop it. If it comes close, I think within like an inch in the, in the model, but this is a true emergency spillway where you have storms that are over 100-year. It might go over.
Or Vermont last week.
Yeah. Just know enough. Let's see here. So we need that, let's see here, just want to-
If you want to just, you can drag that, the zoom thing down and, and open up the application and just show them the architectural so that you're just going to go through the architectural.
Oh, yeah. Who wants to do that?
You both want to go through it, so-
Oh, yeah, we do.
So it's cool. It's very thorough.
It's cool. And that's not a technical term.
So here is the building. As you can see, this, these are the three loading bays and two smaller garage bays and the attached residential dwelling. Jump to the floor plan, just so I can point to. So this is the first floor floor plan, and I'll jump to the second one. Here's the second one. So this portion here, let me just move this. This portion here is dedicated to, you know, the equipment room or washroom.
So that is the monitoring area.
Yep.
And that's directly above the two smaller bays on the first floor, I believe.
Which has the, obviously the fire, fire pole going down.
Got a fire pole.
Fire pole.
And the fire pole's attached to the master bedroom.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you. You can take the man out of the fire department. You don't want to take the fire department.
Apparently not.
I'm a family of firefighters, I will-
35 years of it's all.
So I'll, I'll kind of quickly point out the, the flaw with this architectural plan right off the bat. The, the door on the side or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so these are shown as like a pedestrian entryway as well as like a garage bay on the side here. Obviously, this cannot happen just due to the fact that the grade over there is like much higher.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering about that.
Watch your step, the first one's a doozy.
It was just something that, you know, it showed up, and I was just like, ah, it's small enough where I can talk about it, I don't want to have them fix it until-
So that I'll get struck.
Yep. And I did make sure to check with the architect that, you know, the pedestrian access is not needed here per building code. Most likely, this door will get moved somewhere close to, you know, the center of the, the actual warehouse.
This is second means of aggress.
A second?
Second means of aggress, isn't it, for the-
Yes. I think, I believe that's it for the architectural.
Yeah, I think we should turn it over to the board members now and let them-
I'm going to seize the chair's privilege by opening. So when I first understood the concept, all I had in mind is the monitoring and warehouse with a place for a caretaker that would accommodate for a late-night shift and there'd be a place for them to rest. Wow, when I saw hot tub and a guest room and a fire pole, this looks, let's clarify this. This isn't an occasional living place. This looks like a full-time, year-round living place. Would that be you, Mr. Joy? Are you letting the plant, this is going to be your residence?
Just me, yep.
So how, how, help me understand, how is this a commercial enterprise with a caretaker's unit rather than a house with a home business? And I think-
There could be an issue now with the zoning to run a business in a residential zone. That's, you know, and see, I looked at this, and this is actually ideal, and, you know, light industrial, I checked into it, and, yeah, you know, because I downloaded all the, you know, the AS bylaws and whatnot, and looked at this, you know, it's probably an ideal thing for me, you know? And as, as far as your power combination as well, it's nice to have three-phase event because you, you heat and equipment and everything else, you get an air compressor with a three-phase motor. You can't have three-phase service in a residential dwelling or garage attached to that, so, you know, perfectly, you know, an ideal situation for me. And I love the, the land there. I'm, I'm a big fan of wildlife and, and nature and all that stuff. It's beautiful, you walk out there, it's a beautiful crook, you know, everything. I saw so much wildlife in there that I hadn't seen when I was a kid growing up in Bedford. Well, it's, it's just wonderful. And my real estate agent told me, says, you know, I guess a lot of people looked at this, but because of the size of the property, what they wanted to put in it to make it feasible, feasible for them, it wasn't going to work. So she had told me that, is what works for you may not work for someone else. This is an ideal situation. I want to be part of AS community. I want to be part of ASK community. I kind of know ASK very well. My dad had a sand pit over Shirley back in the seventies, you know? And I used to get high school clothes, it'd pee in laggots there in the corner, so, you see, so... No stranger here, but ASK is a nice, a very nice community. And the other thing is, I do like trains. I got plenty of trains around.
I have no doubt it's dishonorable. That's not what I was, what I'm getting at is how I, we can approve something with ambiguous, an ambiguous, to put it kindly, zoning situation here. Miss, I'm going to turn to my plant, down plan to help me understand how this is kosher.
So I spoke with Ken earlier, he gave me a call as well, and I had similar questions about this. So the question here is, the caretaker's unit is what you're calling the residential portion that's falling under?
Careful what you say. Residential portion and commercials, huh?
Or the, the, the...
Very careful.
The unit in which where he is going to be the dwelling, the caretaker's unit, the dwelling unit.
There you go.
The, the issue, I think, is what I'm getting is that this is much larger than what a caretaker's units would be. This is basically the way it's being, the way it looks is, it's basically a house attached to a giant warehouse. So I think what I going, what I'll need to do is, I'm going to have to talk to Charlie, the building commissioner, and just make, have him look at it and give me a letter for the board. Because there was a discussion with, between Attorney Gibbons and Charlie about this and whether or not the caretaker's unit would be allowed. And based on the discussions that occurred and whatever, I wasn't, I wasn't a part of it, but in the end, Charlie did decide that, okay, based on the use, and it does technically fall under a caretaker's unit, even though in May we had initially said, no, it does not.
Could we ask the commissioner to, with that letter, to provide the legal reasoning behind his, the findings behind his determination? That's...
Yes. And I, so I will request the letter from the building commissioner to clarify as to how he came to it on the, on his opinion on the caretaker's unit and how it is, and the fact that it is allowed and why.
Yes, Limhat?
I might be able to provide a little bit of context. So I guess addressing the size of the dwelling unit itself first, you know, the way that we understood it, and we had spoken with Tom Gibbons, you know, before his retirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's retired now, but, you know...
He'll be back.
Probably. So, you know, we did speak to him a little bit about the verbiage inside the zoning itself. It does say that under industrial use, you are allowed to have an attached residential dwelling. It doesn't actually specify whether that is an accessory or, you know, it just says residential dwelling.
No, it doesn't. It definitely says accessory, non-residential accessory use, right here.
What section?
That's what you referred to in your, you have it right.
Yeah.
So... It's a non-residential accessory use 5.33, it's actually C5, which you have on the front page of your plan. Correct. But you don't have it right on the application, but it's right on the plan. So, yeah, it's right here.
Okay.
Want to read it?
Yeah. Would you read it, please?
I'm just trying to get to the...
Okay, non-residential accessory use is section 5.33, okay? Under the section that starts out as accessory uses, I believe, the whole section is accessory uses. Starts out with residential uses at the beginning, then it turns into this particular little section, which is kind of... So it's 5.3 is accessory uses. There's a lot of accessory uses ahead of it. Then you get into 5.33, which is the non-residential accessory uses. Go to C5, this is what you're looking at, this is what was referred to in the application. "One dwelling unit per industrial establishment, karma, on the same lot as an incidental to a permitted industrial use occupied by the owner or an employee such as a watchman's or caretaker's quarters." So there is no definition, interestingly enough, anywhere that I could find for a watchman's or caretaker's quarters.
That's correct.
But most of us would think of it as a small residence with a bathroom and a kitchenette and, you know, a couple of rooms, a sleeping quarters, and something that a person who would live off-site would stay there in a case of being an actual watchman.
My apologies. I think I might have misremembered. I think the permission or the application of Tom was more specific to the sizing of what is considered accessory use. Is there a limit to...
He probably figured that out, right?
Yeah, I think, I think that was what we determined at the time. My apologies.
No, I mean, you got it right. It's right on the front page of the plan.
The other context behind the conversation with Charlie back when we got the meeting in May was that Charlie had believed that the business itself is more of a commercial use rather than industrial use, because the caretaker's unit is actually incidental to an industrial use. So the clarification that he wanted was that, he wanted to see how much of the business was generated from, you know, the commercial portion rather than the warehousing portion. And Paul actually had provided him with basically a percentage of his income.
It was eight percent on that monitoring, and it was like 92% of warehousing and all your equipment that I'd send out on jobs.
Is this business equipment or is this hobby?
No, this is business. Smoke detectors and pole stations and cornstrows and whatnot, electrical wiring.
Oh, okay, right, right.
Oh, yeah.
You guys didn't buy BEF alarms or somebody like that, right? Fryant planters?
No.
You must know them.
I do know them, yeah.
I mean, it's a similar, it's just an alarm service company.
Yes.
My father had been in the business, all right? I get it.
Yeah, we know it.
I imagine they have trucks, they send out on the road, they do installations.
Yeah, we know what it is.
So I guess the question is, like, I guess Limhat has said, it's kind of the, is there a maximum square footage on a, on an accessory dwelling unit? I guess is the question, right? A minimum.
Jeff has requested before.
I'd like to ask, so I think I understand usually they were struggling. And I think I come from, I come at it from a different angle. Okay? And that is, this is the kind of business that actually is involved in 24/7 service. And if a person's going to live at the business, why can't they have comfort? And since, and it's also, seemingly new use of property here in town, but I believe I drive by a building very similar to this that's already in a neighborhood on a regular, on a regular basis. And it just so happens that there's a fire engine parked in that building too.
That's in a residential zone.
I'm not sure it's not resident, I'm not sure. I'd have to take a look. But anyway. I think it's creative, I think it's creative use of a piece of land, but honestly, it doesn't necessarily not fit.
I don't disagree it's a creative use. I think that is, mine partly creative. However, what I'm trying to, where I'm trying to get to is definitely a certain approval from some zoning, you know, issue figured out. Because here's my concern. We're definitely going to be putting a single-family home in an industrial location. There's no question about it. Even though this plan may call it a commercial building, it's definitely not, the whole building is not a commercial building by any means. It's really a mixed-use building. That's what it is.
Exactly.
Two uses together. Do we want to take the kind of chance that this happens elsewhere in the light industrial zone? People just choose to put a residence next to a usage and say, wait a minute, they did it over there, this guy's got a single-family home, it was 20 all the time, why can't I do it over here?
If I, I anticipate one answer now that we don't, this I think is totally new.
You're right, you're right. This is, this is something new that I have never seen. It is, it is a very creative situation. It's very creative. And it, based on the bylaw, based on everything that I see, I'm going to leave it up to Charlie and I'm going to request a letter from him.
With clarification?
Yes, clarification, because I see both sides here. I understand where, where, you know, Ken and Jonathan are coming. I also see where, you know, the applicant is coming from.
I'd like to figure out...
I need to do it.
We just have to do it.
Exactly. And I also don't, and I, I mean in the sense of, I don't want to set a precedent that can kind of get out of hand.
So one way we cannot let it get out of hand is that at least here, there's a logical tie between residency and 24-hour monitoring. There is 24-hour, you do, right?
Hundreds of companies that monitor things 24 hours a day that have no residency.
And, and I'd like to hear from the building commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that, I think that would give us great guidance. And I think also, this may be an occasion in which conditions may be very, may be necessary. A, you know, some sort of a special condition that this, this may be used as a caretaker's unit or, you know, for him to be able to live in as long as the commercial use or the industrial use is active and fully in use. Because I see an occasion in which, what happens if that portion of the business, he closes it down and now he's got just a single...
The garage.
Yeah. So this may, this may be an issue, in an occasion in which conditions may be necessary.
Right, because what happens to resale? What happens to resale?
One of the things that threw me off, or made it easy, I'm not sure which, was the fact that the drawings call it a house plan. You go to the company's website, they develop the house plans, there's nothing in there that says it's a commercial building. Basically, a nice house with a beautiful garage next to it. My other concern is that I thought it might have to go to the Board of Appeals and let them decide, but Charlie obviously didn't think that.
No, so the way it works is if Charlie...
Get a real variance for the lot, you know, get it from the Board of Appeals.
So the way it works is Charlie makes a determination. Charlie makes that determination and if it needs to go or not. He felt it did not need to go because it met the bylaw.
Okay.
Under his, what he felt. Typically, what would happen is if someone opposed it and didn't agree with that, they could...
Anybody.
Yes, but I think we're well outside of the 30-day zoning...
Haven't seen it yet. Haven't seen it in writing. Haven't seen anything.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll leave this up, but yes, the typical process would be if the, if the building, you know, commissioner issued a letter that was, that someone did not find favorable, they could appeal it to the zoning board.
So Julie had her hand up for earlier.
Just a quick hypothetical as we're throwing them though, but the other flip of that argument is, well, what if the business continues and you move? Like, can that be rented or, like, we don't have control over who lives there, so I guess how does that fit into this?
Well, no, there is, there is within the bylaw.
No, I know.
I understand your question, yes.
It's part of the concept.
So within the bylaw, it does actually say that it has to be the owner or, or the caretaker, or the person who, of the, employee of the company.
So that wording has meat as far as who is living in this household.
It has to be the owner or someone who works for the company.
Okay. And then we don't know what happens if the company is done.
That's, so that's going to be, that's something that I'm going to have to talk to Charlie about.
Okay.
Because that may need to be a special condition within this that says, you know...
Success.
Yeah, you know...
For a long, long time.
I don't know if we can, I don't know if that's lea, you know, there's a lot of new, new things coming up here that I had not foreseen.
Yeah.
So...
I'm sure you've been...
I've never even seen a situation in, you know, in my experience like this, so I'm going to have to talk to Charlie.
Okay. Nathan?
So I agree, this is a great example of, I think the process is, the way it's supposed to work in talking with Charlie, applicants come to him pretty much first, and he, he is the signpost, and he tells you which way to go. I would be very disappointed on behalf of the applicant if you got this far and there was a severe question about the viability of this product, you know? As much as been, is invested in this already. So I would like, I think just a letter from Charlie is the thing to do. What I'll say is, I'm, I would be, one of the reasons, similar to Jeff's point, I'd be in favor of this, is you're adjacent to residential. And isn't it great? I mean, I really like when residential blends to commercial.
Yep.
And this is a, is a great use and a great connection to, to the neighborhood without like a, heaven forbid it was a storage facility. So I'm, I'm in favor.
Jeff, did you have something?
A couple of little questions if you mind, and I, again, will wait for the letter from the, so as commercial fire systems, you have employees that work there?
I have one.
Okay.
And all right now, I have small, small, they've been doing this for a long time.
No, but, but so, so you do have employees, you do have a tax base for the town, so he's bringing employment, he's bringing residents to the town. I find this, I find it a creative use, it solves a problem. Anyway.
Good. Yes, Kathleen?
The, the question I would like answered, I don't know if we can answer this now at the table, is just on this hypothetical. I find it personally a little concerning to say that ownership or occupation of the dwelling is contingent on the business, because what if he wants to retire and what, like, this is a question I would like answered.
And that's the question that I, what scares me the most is because they're hinging the argument that this is an industrial use, which is why they get the residential portion. So what happens if the industrial use is no longer active as an industrial use? What happens to that dwelling unit?
He's still living there.
I know, but like...
His business went away. How do we rent it to someone of the business? That's what happens.
See, but no, but is, is that, it no longer meets zoning?
I know it.
That's, that's the, that's the issue.
That's all we have.
When I think that, when I think that all the way out...
It has to be an accessory to the other business.
Yeah, it does. And, and when you think that all the way out, think about this 15, 20 years down the road, what happens to the, it's no longer an accessory use. Now it's the primary use and now it's non-conforming.
Correct.
Right. And I just want to clarify that the reason I'm asking this question is not because I'm in opposition of the project. I think it's great and I really like it and I, I think that you have every right and should make that fabulous dwelling. I just, I want to...
Yeah.
I, you know...
It's not something I, I was ever thinking about.
Yeah.
It's something that's so...
It's not efficient nor foul at this point.
Yeah.
You don't know what it is.
Exactly. So it's something so far in the future that, wait, can we create something that will eventually or could eventually become non-conforming?
Yeah, that's why the Board of Appeals gets involved a lot.
So I think what we, so I'll talk to Charlie. This is going to be a, an important, I'll talk to Charlie about him having an, issuing us a letter from his opinion.
Yes, Nathan?
Can we move on to other topics?
Absolutely.
Can I move to...
Please, go, go, go ahead.
The, the second, you're gonna...
Go ahead.
Okay. Just some quick ones. I know, Mr. Joy, you were, you and I attended the arsenic site, which is...
Media site.
Media site, which would be your neighbor. Just, can you show me where the water connection is?
Sure.
As, as residents in this bloom-adjacent area, both Mr. Joy and I know that we can't have wells.
So there are three monitoring wells on site. This is the first one here. This is the second one here, and this is the third one here. Do you have a...
The town water connection?
He's asking about water, he's asking about the water, the water.
The water.
What's your water connection?
He has a little connection.
It comes from the...
There it is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. Just demonstrate that there's no well on site.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question, because I did want to bring up the monitoring well as well, because it is an active item on site.
What's the, I couldn't hear you, Limhat?
Monitoring well?
Monitoring well.
Those are from, from the Shepley Hill project.
Yeah, I was on the same.
Yep. And by understanding the comments where they'll maintain, raise the castings on them and maintain them so they can be used going into the future.
That's a good question. Did you guys investigate whether that lot, what's the term, AUM?
AUL.
AUL. Is that lot an AUL?
I don't believe it is.
But have you checked it?
I have checked it. Yes.
You did check it for him?
I did, I did check.
You checked it yourself? The lot, there's, there's a designation in Massachusetts, it's, it's, what's the term? What's it?
Action.
Action.
Use limited.
Yeah, exactly. Action use limited or activity use, activity use limited, it might be. That could have spread out beyond the Shepley Hill Blum. It affects other pieces of land over there.
Oh, you're, oh, you're talking about the arsenic, about how.
I'm talking about, the state overlays these, these districts.
Yep.
Designation in there, you know, for them.
Yeah.
You find it, I've got it on my computer, but I don't have it here.
It's got to be in the GIS overlay.
And it's, it's very deep in the, the findings, but for instance, the West Main Street project down there, which had the video store, that's one of them.
Yep.
So, it just dawned on me when we were talking, because it's adjacent, directly adjacent, that piece could stick out further than the lot line of the Shepley Hill.
So.
So, it overlays.
Oh, I, I.
I want him to know it's protection for himself, is what I'm getting at.
Okay.
That's the question I'm asking, for protection for him.
Yes, I, I, I did look into it and I, I brought that up, it was a big, huge article online about that whole thing and I looked at that.
Okay, so you're, you're good, you and your lawyer are good.
I am aware of it.
Okay. But, so the monitoring wells are part of the inspections for the Shepley Hill.
Yes. And I was actually out there when one of the inspector was collecting sample and just, just asking where he's from, DEP, they do this fairly regularly, so.
Give them an easement? To the monitoring wells?
Well, to be honest with you, I try to look up an easement, whether there is an easement. It seems like they're going on site and is allowed per federal regulations.
So, they have active possession at this point.
We were out there for the Shepley Hill walk, they were actually out there doing the monitoring.
They were doing.
Yeah, they were doing monitoring.
Okay. Just, I'm trying to give him some, if he needs any help, maybe not. Sorry. Anybody else?
Continue. Is there going to be a sign? A business sign?
No.
Okay. And I just noticed any outdoor storage?
No.
And, and the last is, the, the parking lot intentionally has no curbing, right? So, that's so the water goes off.
Could you flow?
Yep.
Okay. Be careful.
And we don't have any public on the Zoom, right? As far as you can see, Danny? Isn't, there are no anticipants?
No. We did call out for landscape boulders as well as shrub along the edge here. You know, which kind of leads me to the, the fire department's comment about providing accommodation for a fire truck turnaround. We purposely left this portion kind of empty without parking space over it so that we can make a turn into this loading bay. I believe it's possible to take out these two shrubs and boulder here so that you can have a fire truck, you know, back into it so the tire is right up to the edge of curb, overhang the, the fore bay a little bit and then get out that way.
And if fire agrees, they can do it, that's fine, right?
And, and. I think, I think the only thing we'll want to just see, we may, I think we want to see some truck turnaround templates.
Yep, problem.
Just so that, you know, we're, we're, okay, and I think their, the fire department just got a new.
Our new trucks here, guys.
Our new ladder.
Our new truck.
Our new truck that delivered this week. And I would just reach out to them and get the specs on it, I don't know what the size is.
Hopefully it's not the really, really big one.
I.
We've waited two and a half years.
I don't know how big it is, but I think it's pretty big.
So, Limma, if you can make that an action item, check that out.
Yeah. In that case, I also want to just add that, you know, the building is also sprinkler install.
We do.
In case we can't make the turnaround, I just throw it out.
So, when there's a fire, the hot tub drains, is that the idea?
Any leftover?
Yeah, and you slide down the pole and run. Go ahead.
Oh, wait, wait.
Kathleen, go there. Kill the Kathleen and then Ken.
The fire trucks that are going to be there, maybe you can give like a touch of background of like, are they going to be going out and like turning their alarms on?
No.
Okay, okay.
No.
These trucks you do your collection?
Yes.
They're all, they're all the pieces.
So, they're not, can you just give like a brief summary of what the business does? So, you have the monitoring piece and then what are the trucks for, just?
Well, the trucks for his personal collection, really.
Oh, okay, they're not.
They're like AT cars.
Okay, got it.
But you did say that there's some vans that come in and out, the guys come in, servicemen come in and pick stuff up.
Yeah, but they're, they're coming in through with.
Right off the coast.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. I just had a couple, a couple of things. Kind of interesting, but Nathan asked about the water and the fire department said the same thing. So, your plan should show a sprinkler service line to the building.
Yeah, you got to have a fire service main.
Right.
I'd like to add one from, I believe there's a 12-inch main that comes down Scully now, it's relatively new, and there's a piece of 4-inch cast iron that goes up and feeds the residences, you know.
Okay.
We did a hydrant flow test.
You did.
With the water department. There's plenty of water, but I don't like the idea of the 4-inch cast, so I'm willing to put it, at least a 6-inch up Scully and add a hydrant there, because there's nothing there.
That's my next question. Okay, that's all good.
Excellent.
You are prepared to pay the cost of the linear foot for that? That's a lot of money.
Business pays for it. I'm well aware.
He's protecting his business by hooming it.
So, I was going to try to save you some money here and.
And the neighbors.
Can tell me why I shouldn't do this. The roof drain, from my experience from construction projects that I've done, is the roof drains are considered to be clean water and do not have to be infiltrated in a subsurface system like that. They can be direct to the.
Direct discharge.
The devastations and other stuff like that. So, I'm always used to the reverse. You've got the reverse of what I'm used to. The parking lot typically would go to the infiltration because of the oils and whatnot. Roof drain could go clear because it's considered to be clean water. This particular roof is a metal roof, the way I saw it, that's really clean.
It is.
There's not even any ashfall, shingles. So, why are we putting a roof drain system into the subsurface infiltration chambers?
So, the, the infiltration chamber is actually provided to meet the groundwater recharge requirement of the air stall water regulations for new construction.
You just can't leave too fast.
Well, that's good.
You have to hold it.
I know, but can we do it in a detention system instead of an infiltration basin? That's a lot of money.
I think the issue is, I don't think they have a big enough footprint because of the, the 100-year, the, the wetland buffers, all that also plays into this.
Yeah. Fortunately, when it comes to infiltration basin, there's a lot of things you have to consider. First and foremost, you have to provide at least 10 feet for top of berm surrounding the whole thing.
Yeah.
So, that eats up a lot of space already. You have to provide one for the freeboard from the top of berm to 100-year floodplain, 100-year storm, so that eats up, you know, a foot and a quarter. So, it takes up a lot of, it eats up a lot of space for the basin itself, which is why we had to provide the chambers.
Okay, so, that's, could you label the pipe that leaves the roof drains around the building, the sizing between the building and the infiltration station? It's, I presume it's going to be bigger than the rest, which I think you called out as 4 inches.
Um, I believe this is.
Is that all it is, is 4 inches?
No, no, I believe this is called out a 6-inch in the model itself.
Oh, okay, someplace.
Yeah.
In the stall water apartment.
Okay, cool.
Let me see, maybe it's in the next page. Just jump to there.
You are aware that your building is on a slab, the entire thing?
That is correct.
6-inch, no, it says right there, 6-inch roof drain.
6-inch roof drain.
I know that, but, okay, so it's 6 inches all the way.
Yep.
Basically. I thought it might go to 8, when you consolidate all that water or some other number, because it's a 12 coming out the other side. Isn't it something like that?
Yeah, there's a 12 coming out over here, but there's also, there's a 6-inch going in and there's a 6-inch coming out.
Okay, thank you.
Fortunately, we do have a pretty good drainage soil, so it takes care of mostly.
So, the whole thing's on a slab? You know that?
That is.
All residents?
That's correct, the whole thing, yeah.
The plans will have to be modified for New England conditions, so if it doesn't show, it doesn't show a lot of things we typically would have on a New England set of plans.
Yep.
That's up to you and Charlie and whatnot. Just surprising. We don't, so there's no basement under the residential side? I don't recommend a basement.
The dwelling unit.
The dwelling unit.
The caretaker's dwelling.
Caretaker's dwelling.
Just teasing.
We talked about the fire service line, we talked about drainage.
So, you know, one way to get around the issue is I think you should combine the master bedroom and the monitoring room and that really introduces the use and the living.
You want a, you want a wall-sized T-Wee in your, in your master bedroom?
In the third paragraph on the application on the proposed conditions, you, you said that the, you talked about the size of the property after its gross area from the footprint of the property and whatnot, then you said approximately 274 square feet shall be allocated for an office space within the attached dwelling unit. It's not right, is it? The office is out in the perimeter above the garage, I think.
Right.
But I think there's a door connecting them.
He says here, it's, this 274 shall be allocated for an office space within the attached dwelling unit.
Yeah, so.
I think they're using that as within the footprint of that. I mean, just based on how the plans laid out.
So, you're saying the dwelling unit goes over the garage as well and it's bigger than ours, it's like, it's already over 3,000 square feet.
Excuse me, but I, I don't know.
That's why I'm asking the other question. Is that just a mistake?
No, 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 so the clarification for the 274, we're actually trying to allocate a certain office space inside the actual residential portion.
Yeah.
Knowing that, you know, it might.
Sorry.
Accessory unit? Knowing, knowing, understanding that he might want a little office space inside the, you know, for the business itself. And, you know, we provided that as a mean to kind of do the, the counting for the parking space as well. That's really the main reason for having it.
So, that's not the watchroom?
No, 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 no.
It's within, so it's right the way you got it.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
I propose that we vote on the waivers.
Well, should we, I think, should we?
Wait on the letter from Charlie?
I think we should wait on the letter from Charlie.
Yeah, I think we should wait on the letter from Charlie.
Okay.
We don't want to get too.
If you don't, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I think.
No, I don't mind. I just thought, I like to move things where we can move things, so, but I, well said, well taken.
I think this has been a really good conversation. You know, I can start working on getting some, a draft decision at least written up and ready and so that at the next meeting, we can have Charlie's opinion and then we can discuss the possible, you know, waivers and conditions.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, yes, Limma?
Just because I, I just want to make sure we don't gloss over it. Do we want to go over the, you know, the department review as well as comments, response?
The comments?
Yeah.
So, I'm, I, I haven't received any responses from any of the other departments.
Okay.
I'll, I can get back to you on those if there's any other comments that come out of that.
Okay.
But I don't know if the board wants to go through his responses.
I'm doing it.
Let's do them all at once, the, the next meeting? Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Unless, Limma, you had something urgent burning that you wanted to get.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Good.
We just need a continuation to the next meeting, so the next meeting's good for you guys?
September 10th.
September 10th, night, September 10th?
I just want to throw this out there because we do have a scheduled sidewalk with conservation on the 14. I'm not sure if anybody would like to join us.
Do we have time to put a notice and everything? It's September 14th?
For the 14th, yeah, that'll be, so.
Sidewalk?
It'll be after our September 10th meeting.
Yeah.
But if you guys want to join in on and go see the site with them, yeah.
Is that a third, what's the date for that?
It's Saturday.
Saturday?
We do ours on Saturdays.
And what time is the walk going to be?
8:00 AM.
Perfect.
What is it, the 14th?
I have a child that don't remember. I don't know if I'm going to be able to make that.
Saturday to 14th.
14th at 8:00 AM. I, I'll, I'll see what I can do.
You mean you like our Thursdays?
I love our Thursdays.
Well, it all depends on how.
I had a bonus point for that one, that was my genius.
Yes, yes, you do.
Okay.
So, prior to the sidewalk, we have surveys scheduled to stake out building corners So project to the sidewalk, we have surveys scheduled to stake out building corners as well as edge of, edge of berm for the basin itself, just to kind of show you guys the extent of the development.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
There seems to be a certain amount of immediacy to getting information from Charlie.
What?
I didn't hear.
I'm, I'm starting to feel like there's a certain amount of immediacy in getting Charlie's input on this because a lot of activity is happening.
Yeah, no, I shouldn't. I'm going to have a discussion with him tomorrow. He wasn't in when I wanted to talk to him today. He had to go.
I'm not saying he was doing anything wrong. I just, I think that's a.
Yep, yep. I'm going to have a discussion with him tomorrow.
Okay. He was a dentist today, so.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for Zero Scully Road, map 33 parcel three, to our next planning board meeting on September 10th.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kent?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair in votes aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
See you soon. I'm going to call a five-minute recess and we'll regroup just, just after 7:25.
She's going to be wanting.
Okay, we're resuming, resuming the meeting. We're going to start the project status update with just, I just want to give you a few points that I learned today from a webinar hosted by Judy Barrett of Barrett Consulting Group about the new, the ADU, accessory dwelling unit law. I think that was August 4th. And believe it or not, the second speaker was someone familiar to us, Amy Questle.
Yep.
So this was the most attended webinar they've ever done. So there's a lot of interest in this. And I know these are rather random because the details are a little, are complicated, but they've posted stuff on their own site. But I thought the high-level points would interest you. The, first of all, what this means is that ADUs are, according to Massachusetts law, are allowed anywhere where single-family residence is owned.
Yeah.
And that mean, and without special permit.
Mm-hmm.
However, this is, everything gets complicated. Of course it does.
Wait a minute. Did you say everywhere in single-family zones or residential zones?
Single-family residential. Wherever it's owned, it's owned for single-family residences, then it's, you can put one, an ADU.
So anywhere that has, that allows for single-family homes.
Anywhere that allows.
And there's the reasoning that, I'm sure they're saying this, is because there are single-family residential zones and then there's.
Multi-family.
Then there's multi. And then there's also.
Two families.
Everything.
Okay.
So it depends on the town.
Anywhere you can put a single family.
Anywhere that you can put a single family.
Now.
Well, one exists.
However, this is interesting. Apparently, when they were asked regarding parking, no more than one additional parking space for this ADU, but within a half mile of an MBTA district that we talked about, you can't impose any parking for an ADU. So that's interesting, the parking part. The second thing is that a town may require site plan review. There can be up to the town to say, yes, we want site plan review. They recommended.
Wait a minute. You can never have more than one parking space, no matter what. You can only have one for the ADU. Then you said if you're within a certain district, you can't imply any parking requirements.
Right.
So you could have more than one?
No, you cannot impose.
I heard that as, no minimum.
Yes, you can have zero.
No minimum.
Yes. So.
He's such a contrarian.
There can be, a town can request a special permit if there's a request of more than one ADU per single-family residence. So you, that you can request. Questle advised in regarding the site plan review portion that maybe a modified site plan would be.
Minor, which is where.
A minor because obviously there's so many things you wouldn't have to deal with that ADU because you wouldn't be adding additional, et cetera, type of stuff. Excuse me one moment, I'm just trying to say, oh, and then just another note, like for instance, things like septic, we don't really have that big issue here, but they were just saying that, yeah, you'd have to make sure the septic was sized enough to accommodate the ADU. And I will tell you, the most interesting part of the meeting, this meeting devolved into, as you can imagine, 40, 40-plus minutes of questions on minutia. What if this? What if that? Can we do this? Can we do that? And finally Judy Barrett said, hey, everybody, wait. Remember, the purpose of this is to enable more housing. Just keep that focus and that's not, so. That's it. What this tells me is that, yep, ADUs are coming and that if we really want to dive into specifics, we got to download more information. I just wanted to give you the very high level, just sense of where the Barrett group stands on this and where some of the real estate attorneys are thinking about this. I, I'm confused whether the law is in place now or it's February 6th.
February 2025.
It's February.
Yep, that's when it kicks in.
It kicks in.
Okay. So that's what I have.
If I may, the only question I had about that is, since we already have an ADU on our books, does this supersede it?
Yes. Or does? Yes, because now it's state law. So it supersede.
All that work we did for nothing.
Correct.
Interesting statistic to me, listening to somebody discuss a proposed reuse of land in the Alston neighborhood of Boston, Alston's building code is over 3,000 pages long. Guys, we got to start thinking about making them shorter, but go ahead.
That's it. I turn it over to Danny to talk about this project status.
I'm just going to turn it over to Heather for her update on Shaker Mill. Shaker Mill.
Oh, cool.
Conservation restriction.
So they have submitted to the select board for street acceptance.
Oh.
For what?
Street acceptance. Acceptance.
Oh, okay.
So, and that's when the town will end up taking over the subdivision road and, and do the, you know, maintenance and all that.
So as far as the conservation commission stands with the Shaker Mill Pond subdivision, they need to still accept the conservation restriction. The commission held a site visit two Saturdays ago, yeah, in regards to the baseline report that was done for the, the conservation restriction because there were four violations already on that site. One being a shed that was built, the corner of the shed was in the CR. There's also a set of stairs that go down. There was questions on a shed and then there was a, you know, a fence on one side and a tree that was planted. So while we were on site, we noticed two other violations on the site. So it's just a matter of questions on how the commission feels about accepting a conservation restriction with already violations on it, addressing those violations and ensuring that the conservation restriction language has gone through the state and is complete. But other than that, everything seems to be within order at this point. I mean, I have my, my feelings about it, but that's just on the monitoring standpoint of it. So I, now I emailed Jonathan in regards to the commission feels going forward, this one's dead and done, so, I meant dead, this one's done. So what they would like to see going forward is they, they've requested that we try to have a joint meeting with the conservation commission and the planning board to discuss conservation restrictions going forward. As the conservation commission, we are seen as the person who's going to take the land, whereas the planning board is the person who approves the project. So there tends to be a, almost lapse in communications and what's going on and what each board expects. So they want to have a meeting just so we can have a, a clear understanding of going forward when, as we're approving, like Panther Place is the next one, that one's not set in stone yet, but when we're going through for Stratton Hill, for example, that everyone's on the same page when we're approving this conservation, and we're approving the subdivision prior to everything going to conservation restriction because this is just our new normal now and we need to get sure we, everyone's on the same page and knows how we're going to approve these things going forward.
And, and another project that we will be seeing this for is the, the Fields project up.
Oh, yes.
By the, on Groton Harvard Road.
And I, I think that that's a great idea. Heather, I would add that part of the conversation should be, how do we, how do we communicate obligations to new homeowners?
Correct.
Who obviously don't know where to put the shed, what, I mean, there's, we're seeing more and more of this and we.
And this really needs something in place. And I think this is where it's going to come into better writ, written decisions, conditions, requirements of the applicant or whoever's selling the house to provide us with documentation that sellers receive this. So there's, there's ways to address this. I've dealt with this on, on other projects, so I have ideas of, of how we can make sure that things are being done properly.
One of the problems that we had, first of all, so thank you very much, that's great. So in this particular case, just to review, the conservation commission has decided to take the land.
You're not farming it out to a third?
No, the, the commission's going to take the land, yeah.
So the town of here is taking the land?
Yeah, again.
Restriction.
I don't, I think they, yes, yes, we're, we're taking the land.
Sorry, what land? Because you said the street acceptance and now I'm.
Yeah, there are.
Lots of parts moving at the same time.
Yeah, there's two, there's a multiple discussions kind of. The street acceptance is the process to start this whole discussion. The conservation restriction is one part of the discussion and the street acceptance is the main portion of the project. It's like, so if they.
When he's done, I'll differ.
The land is open space. It's a project, that's all.
And Kathleen, what makes this one different is every single subdivision, we assume, has streets. We only take the streets when they're complete as a town. It's our way of holding the developers, to be honest, to get all the work done. In this case, it's also surrounded by land that's pertaining to conservation in perpetuity. The street acceptance and the conservation restriction acceptance are very, very different and will, and travel two separate paths, but it's part of this project. How, how a CR is handled is a conversation we have another time because that can be fairly complex.
It has to do with.
The manual's a hundred something pages.
So one of the things I remember from the presentation about CRs is that there's, there's the holder of the CR and then there's the holder of the land. So in this case, are we holding, the town holding both or?
So there's the grantor and the grantee. So the, we hold the CR, which means we hold the, the, what's the language in that CR? Aho holds the land. So we're holding the CR is how it works, but because we're holding the CR, technically I'm, we're, the commissioners and myself is in charge of ensuring everything written in that, that CR, the conservation restriction.
Gotcha.
Is followed. So.
Homeowners Association from Aho, the homeowners association in this case is still the land, has the, what do you call it when it's under the fee? They, they have the fee to the land. They own the land still. It's part of their open space for the homeowners association.
Yes, yes.
Which, which we have, which the public has the right to go on to.
It's highly limited what they can do on it.
Yeah.
And it's enforced by, it's enforced by people outside the homeowners association for really good reason.
And, and what's allowed on there is actually, most of that is, is state statute on there as well.
Yeah, it's part of the whole.
What's important, I think, for Kathleen is that what we do with subdivision today, all the subdivisions that we do, require them to give us at least 50% of the land is open space. This is just another step in that process. How do you identify the open space? They have to give us a drawing of it. It's got to be all marked out. They have to approve it, you know, all this other, there's a lot to it.
And then when you.
The state has to approve.
And then when you get 25 or 35 or 50 or 100 owners on there, hey, we need a shed. Okay, they just buy a shed and put it out there because they don't recognize or realize they have to watch for boundaries.
Yeah.
People don't typically do it intentionally, they do it unintentionally more often than not.
I think the language we had in the, I'm pretty sure if I'm not forgetting, the language we had in the approval of the, the conditions.
Yeah.
Was the last CO was not supposed to be issued until we had the conservation restriction done.
Which unfortunately.
But then you said COVID came out.
Yeah, and what happened was.
So there's. We had the right language is what I'm getting at, I think.
So.
No, maybe.
No.
Are we setting up a joint, a tie for a joint meeting?
So that's the question that we have. Unfortunately, my commission was obviously invited to come this evening, this evening. They, majority of them are unavailable for the, this weekend, next week. So I don't know when we are, because and then I know your schedule, as far as your meetings go, get very busy with Stratton Hill and everything else. So I don't know if it's availability to do in one of your meetings or not, or if it's something we can do at a conservation meeting or an additional meeting. That becomes too difficult, I can always speak with them about having representatives for that.
So can I just ask a quick question? Do we want to specifically talk Shaker Mill Pond or is this a overall discussion about the CRs?
This is an overall discussion. I think they will go back to Shaker Mill Pond, but they basically said, you know, as far as going through and trying to make changes on that one, it may or may not be available at this time, but there, there will be discussions on that as well.
I'm just trying to figure out timing because based on the applicant has submitted for, for street acceptance. So they will be going before the select board, it's on September 4th.
Fourth, yes.
We will, then they will refer to us, which will most likely come September 10th. We have until.
September 27th.
To accept the road, so we could push it off to the 24th, the, or to, to recommend it to town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Does this conversation need to happen between then or is this something that could happen outside of that?
The, my, my only, in regards to Shaker Mill Pond, my only comment that I know that the commission has issues with, with it is the amount of signage on that site for the CR.
Too much or too little?
Too little. That's, 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 as far as going forward, that's, as far as that one's concerned, that's, that's their concern on that one because of the violations we saw on site.
So I think that's a conversation if you want me to have.
Yep.
Because I was the one who determined that.
Yeah, correct. And that, and that's fine. And then I think going forward, just because of the amount of ones we have, I thought like, oh, maybe we could draft up some sort of CR regulations that we have. So like going forward, every one that gets approved, we know we want X amount of signs, they look like this, fencing is this. And something like that.
I just want to make sure.
Have that as a discussion in whether then to being, and I think they want to have as a joint meeting.
Yeah.
Because these are joint decisions that get made for the OSRD, right? You, you have the conservation analysis, it goes through the commission, the commission may or may not be the person that holds the CR. There's a lot of steps that we're involved in that we think we should all be involved in a, a decision in regards to that.
And I agree. I just want to, I'm just trying to make sure timing-wise.
Yes.
We get the meeting that needs to happen.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe I can come to the board and, and if you want me to come there and I can discuss with them.
It's fine.
Explain my reasoning behind why I said, you know, where to put the signs. And then we can also schedule a meeting so that we're not all rushing to try to figure out when we can.
Correct.
On what works best for everyone for a joint meeting to discuss CRs in general.
Yep.
So I can trust that you two can negotiate throughout the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I'll reach out to all the board members once she, once she's had a chance to reach out to her board.
Yeah, so I know my board, I know they were busy this week, so they couldn't be here tonight and I know the jury of them is busy next week, hence why Scully Road isn't having their site visit to the 14th. That's the, the time that could all go.
Okay.
So all my hearings have continued for two meetings. So I know, and then Labor Day is throwing a wrench in things.
Yeah.
So we're, we're getting short on time on that, but we would like to have that meeting just to get those things figured out because it's been one of these things where we even had Curly Circle that the CR got approved, but I never had a baseline done for it.
Yeah.
And that street got accepted.
Yeah. So this, this definitely.
To try to get these from happening going forward.
And we do have, the warrant articles have to be done by September 27th.
Yep.
Yes.
If we can't make it by the 27th, for whatever reason, it can go on the warrant in the spring.
All right, my understanding, we're trying our best to not delay them. And I, and I've expressed that to Mr. Aho several times. I, I don't see it being that, but again, I don't make the decision. It's up to.
Absolutely.
The planning board and the, and the select board and then town meeting to accept the road or not.
So the Shaker Mill shouldn't have an issue?
No.
I think we, we should be fine on timing-wise. I think future CR stuff, that's, that's really the, the, you know, the meeting together, a joint meeting and discussing what we want to see.
Yeah.
And maybe me and you need to get together and kind of have a sit-down and like start initially writing some stuff down as to what we want.
Yeah, I think this was just, it was a new concept that came to the board and nobody quite understood the ramifications and the details that went into it. And we're now just going, oh, okay, now we need to do this now.
And also the.
Yeah, we're leaving it at that.
I'm just going to leave it at that.
So we're good now? We're good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Any others, projects to, what do you got for us?
All right. So I gave you this update before, but Stratton Hill, we will be having a quick meeting with the applicant and their engineers and the DPW tomorrow at the DPW, just to go through the peer review comments and try to hatch out a lot of those issues and figuring out so that when we get to the board, we're getting down to the important topics to discuss, which are going to be, you know, recommendations from Green International from the board.
Right, right. Okay, good.
There, so I've, I've had a couple of discussions with the Fields and they're moving along in their process, which is the 38 Groton Harvard Road, which is the old Hudland property and old Emily's Way subdivision. They're in the process of, of working on getting some, working on the conservation analysis, getting that moving along so that when they come to us, you know, this is going to be really the first project that's going to come to us since Heather and I have been, you know, we'll be here together, working on a open space, you know, residential development. So we'll be able to really make sure that that one is going to work as, as it should. Timing, making sure everyone's, timing of the CRs are done properly, notification of, of, of the homeowners and all that stuff. So that's going to be where I think the process of the narrowing down CRs and conservation analysis is going to be refined during that process.
Excellent.
I'm trying to think.
What about the, the food company out by Katania Spag? What happened there?
Nusoya?
Nusoya.
I believe they had, they had submitted to Charlie for foundation permits, but I don't know if they've, they've been in to talk to Charlie the, you know, a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. So I know they're, they're over there talking. 77 Pittsburgh Road recorded their decision and they should be probably submitting for a building permit to get that process going. I was just talking to Limhut about 91 Groton Harvard Road. We have not heard from them. They have not recorded the decision yet, so they haven't been able to set up pre-construction meetings, but he's reaching out to them and, but as of now, it's kind of been silent over there. So I don't know.
That's the one, right? I'm sorry, under the transfer station?
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Because they have new signs up too.
My God.
Like new businesses are there. That doesn't matter, right? Or does it? Okay, that's what I was...
St. Poly Clothing Textile.
Yes, they have a clothing business.
The St. Poly.
They're advertising.
Those were the trucks that were...
The trucks that were there.
Those were the trucks that were working when we were there that day.
The signs...
Wait, they have it.
Yes.
It's a bright yellow sign.
It's an old fashioned flock of signs.
But it's a textile?
Yeah, St. Poly Textile Company.
Remember when we were there, there was people taking from one truck, putting it into a bigger truck? Clothing and stuff. It's, it looks, just guessing.
Yeah.
But it looks quite like trucks are going there, dropping off some clothes into a bigger tractor trailer to transport it somewhere else.
Yeah.
It's like a clothing pickup place of some sort. That they've been using probably, I don't know, how long.
Pre-existing. Is it pre-existing? I don't know.
Sign is new.
The sign is new. Is the use pre, I'm gonna have to talk to Charlie.
I think it's a sublet, it's a, I think these people were subletting from the old owner.
Yes, but there are...
I'm just saying that, that's all.
Certainly nothing that was brought to our...
I know, I know you'll get a chance to look into it.
Okay, so, thank you for letting me know about that.
When you all walked around and I couldn't go for the walkie because I broke my leg, I watched them doing this, I'm thinking to myself, that's been there for a while.
Anyhow.
Okay. It's been hiding in plain sight for years.
I had a meeting today with 22 Pittsburgh Road Shop and Save.
Oh.
They're looking to start the pad. So they're hoping to get at least the foundation in before the winter.
Build what?
The pad site that goes up front in the front left of the site.
That was gonna be a donut shop, wasn't it?
Yes.
So they're gonna build a pad without a building, or they're gonna build a...
They're gonna put the foundation in for the winter and then they'll, you know, they'll cover it. And then in the spring they'll build the sign.
That's what he's talking about, the next building. It was gonna be a fortune.
They're on the town, yeah.
It was gonna be a donut shop, but apparently it's not.
Did that come to us?
Yeah. So in November of 2022, you guys...
Oh my God, we approved it two years ago. Okay, alright, I was just, okay, good.
Yeah, you guys approved it.
Okay.
Yes, we were out there, so they'll be starting that hopefully soon. Trying to think if there was anything else. That's all I had.
And we have the site visit...
Thursday, tomorrow. No, Thursday, on today's Tuesday.
Thursday, 8 o'clock.
You'll get some stuff.
8:00, 8:30, 8?
8.
8. So that brings us to...
A sidewalk for National Grid.
The National Grid side.
Oh, that's right.
So, that leaves us with the fall town meeting update and proposed zoning amendments. I just want to remind everyone that this is an informational discussion only, that we will of course have a formal public hearing as required for anything going to town meeting. But, the point of this is Danny to bring us up to date on what the working groups have been doing and where we stand.
Alright, this is a...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Danny will be doing this presentation tomorrow evening to a joint meeting of the Housing Committee and the Housing Trust.
Oh, great. Yes. So, the working group has been working on an inclusionary housing bylaw. We, there's also another bylaw that Ken, Jonathan, myself, Alicia and Alan were working on for the MBTA overlay district. And so those were the two bylaws that we're going to be, are going to be going to the select board and then to planning board, and then from there would go to town meeting. The, there's two other zoning amendments that come out of those two bylaws. The updated zoning map, which comes for, just showed the MBTA overlay district and changing in definitions. So those are the four zoning amendments that are going to fall town meeting. So the inclusionary housing bylaw, I gave you guys the bylaw last time at the last meeting so that you guys could kind of look. And so just, this is the presentation I'm going to be giving to the select board on September 4th. So, it kind of just goes through the main sections of the bylaw and where, you know, the meets of the bylaw. We completely rewrote the bylaw. So, the old 10.3 is going to be completely stricken. The new one is going to go in. So, applicability, and this is where, these are the biggest changes. So, our old bylaw said that it was for multifamily if you had five units or more. The way this new bylaw is written, it says, "Any residential development or mixed-use development in a single structure or multiple structures resulting in a net increase of five or more dwelling units on any parcel or contiguous parcels comprising a proposed development site." So what that basically means is, any project that's going to be coming in with a net increase of five dwelling units, even if it's on multiple lots owned by, in the same ownership, those will trigger the inclusionary housing bylaw. So, an example would be the, on Shaker Road, no, right on 2A.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
The Aho project, that he did all those A and Rs, there were like nine of them. That, that would have triggered this bylaw. So, they would have had to provide one, at least one affordable.
And that'll hold up in accord to the law, because they will argue...
Yep, and so this bylaw is actually, was approved and is what MHP uses as a template for most of the towns that they go to speak at.
Because if one thing I've learned from the gentlemen sitting at the end of the tables, to anticipate what the response would be.
Yes, and that's the reason, so, we had a meeting with MHP, I don't know if you were there, but I thought you were there. This is the specific bylaw that she, they like to use. And it's actually, I used it in Salisbury as well. Salisbury, so what I did was I took Salisbury's and then I kind of got rid of the Salisbury stuff and kind of cleaned it up with what we wanted and changes, we made some changes also as well. Another applicability, so another trigger would be a finding, special permit or variance to a zoning board of appeals or planning board that results a net increase of five or more dwelling units, whether by new construction or by alteration, expansion, reconstruction, or change of an existing residential or non-residential structure or space, whether or not, whether on one or more contiguous parcels comprising of a proposed development site. So, perfect example for this one would be the firehouse. So if they had, since it would be, five units is what they proposed there, this would have triggered, so they would have had to provide us, provide with one affordable unit. So, this one kind of is for like those uses where you're converting a commercial structure or some sort of structure into a residential structure, that's multifamily. And within our bylaw, those are, I believe, ZBA. So there's, zoning board is in there for that reason. And then also...
Kathleen, do you have a question on that?
Just a quick clarification on the math. So, if you build five dwelling units, you can have four at market value, fifth is affordable, or you pay the...
The payment and lieu.
Okay, it's not five plus one?
No, so if they came in with five, one of those units would have to be an affordable unit. If they chose not to do the affordable unit, they could do the payment and lieu. Which, and in that, depending on, so I'll show you on that one, I'll get to that one and I'll show you what the prices for the payment and lieu will be.
And 10 would be two and so on.
So 10, so the way we were looking at it is, minimum 10% if you're, depending on the development, depending on what, how many units you're proposing, it's 10% of the proper, of the project number. And then you either round down or round up, depending on where that number, if it's .5, you round up, if it's under .5, you round down. So it gets a little confusing under...
So you are round, that's gonna be my question, is in how?
So like, under 10 units, basically at 10 and under, like, I know it sounds like it's more than 10%, but that's the minimum. You have to provide at least one.
Right.
Or you're providing the payment and lieu. And most of the time, the way it would work is, developers at that small of a development would just rather do the payment and lieu. So, and then, any division of land, including but not limited, not limited to divisions as a result of the MGL 41, Section 81K to 81GG, which is subdivision and also the 81P, which is approval not required. And this one would be the same if, with a net increase of five or more dwelling units. Okay, so this is our requirement base. Any development subject to this section, at least 10% of the dwelling unit shall be affordable housing. Fractions of .5 or more shall be rounded up to the next whole number. Fractions less than 10, .5 shall be rounded down to the next whole number. Alright, so affordable units and how they provide it. So, there's three ways to provide it. This all got changed anyways. You can provide them onsite, and so here are the requirements for this. So, for onsite, construction of affordable units onsite of the project is preferred. Approach to create affordable housing, it shall be required for any development that includes 20 or more units. However, onsite units, affordable units shall not be required for any development that includes 19 or fewer dwelling units. Onsite affordable rentals units shall be required. Bonus units do not count towards this section. So basically, what we were thinking is, developers who are building under 20 units, gives them the ability to pay the payment and lieu to not have to provide the affordable unit and not have to go through the process of the affordable housing and doing the deed writer and the lottery and all that stuff. So there is kind of a little bit of a process that goes with affordable housing, which could have, you know, for developers that don't have the experience, usually they just would rather not do it, so they'll do the payment and lieu for, instead of providing the units. For developers that have more than 20 units, they're required, because most developers that are providing that much more housing have more of an experience of dealing with affordable housing because of, this is not the only town that has it. It's in almost every town that I've ever dealt with and developed in.
One question. Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, sorry. From the conference we attended, I vaguely remember something about the affordable units need not be like detectable from the other units.
Yep.
Is that going to be incorporated in this bylaw?
So that's in the language of the, through the state. Like that's part of the affordable unit requirement and it's, it's part of the state law.
So that's like implicitly?
Yeah, it is. It's part of the state law. There is, you cannot, there are requirements, guidelines within...
Have to be comparable.
Yeah.
Right, you can't...
Through the state and like mass housing, well, they're not... Yeah, they change. There's a guideline that tells you what you can and cannot do and making them look any different can... Yeah, EOH, EOHLC.
Okay, and so that's state law, therefore it doesn't have to be in the bylaw?
Yes, correct. Yeah, so that is implicit, like, that cannot be, that's not allowed.
Okay.
So my question was, the sentence, it says onsite affordable rental units shall be required.
Cause this would, this, so rental is the word there.
I see it, yeah.
So, because that's for like apartments, so if we were to do a DMG project versus a...
So if the entire project were a rental project?
Yep.
That's what you're trying to say?
Correct. Yep, and that's what we had talked about with Alicia, that was Alicia's request.
I understand it.
Yep.
I'm just not sure the sentence makes it clear to everybody. Onsite affordable rental units shall be required.
Yes, so you can't do the payment and lieu, is what that says.
It just says it's required. What I'm trying to say, maybe we need to make it a little clearer.
Yes, that language is absolutely 100% means nothing.
Yeah, maybe I could propose something.
Let's roll through.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's got a long way to go.
We got a long way to go.
We'll go back to the planning board later.
And you guys, by the way, you guys have an amazing amount of work on this, but when people start looking at it, you're gonna find stuff like this.
Okay. B, the planning board and/or zoning board, as applicable, may approve one or the both, or both of the following methods alone or in combination. In no event shall the total numbers of units provided through such methods be less than the number of affordable housing units required for 320, for Section 10.34.
And it's mass law, Section 320, 10...
No, that's our zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Yep. A housing contribution payment to the air affordable housing trust determined in accordance with 10.37 for any development with at least five or more, five but not more than 19 dwelling units. So that's the payment and lieu. And then off-site units. So, off-site units are comparable affordable units on another site in air. Off-site units need to be located in the same district as the development. The approved location of the off-site affordable housing unit shall be identified in the applicable board's decision. Preservation of existing dwelling units for the affordable housing may be accomplished by purchasing deed restrictions and providing funds for the capital improvements to create housing at equal or greater value as new construction units. So basically what that says is, developers in conjunction with the planning board and in discussion with Alicia and the affordable housing could work on a deal that would allow them to build them off-site. Or you could do them off-site and payment and lieu. There's a combination of that, but it's basically, you either provide them onsite or you're doing the payment and lieu and the off-site or just payment and lieu.
I like the word, need not be located in the same district. So they have a choice of any way they want to put them in the town.
There may not be available land in that district.
I mean, we talked about it, but it was, I like, okay, I'm good with that, thank you.
And we've actually come up with no more land, we have to worry about that too.
We're coming up with land for you.
Kathleen?
Does the off-site have to match the onsite explicitly? So like if you build five 2,000 square feet, the off-site has to be the same thing?
So there's, so that's actually a great question. I would have to defer to Alicia, she'll know better on that one.
Okay.
She knows the process on that. But I believe that you still have to follow state law and it does, I think, still have to look similar to the units and, but I don't, I'm not 100% sure on that, that Alicia would know.
And actually, that's a long conversation and why housing authorities don't want piecemeal stuff, because they can't control it, it doesn't look the right, falls apart.
Yep.
That's a really good question.
You typically don't see this. It's a very rare option that needs to get approved through the planning board, also through, goes through the affordable housing committee. Like there's such a big process for that, you don't typically see that because it's, like Jeff said, it's not something that is...
See it in practice, as opposed to see it in a bylaw.
Correct, yes.
And if you're a builder doing work over here, your cost of doing work over there just adds.
Site mobilization and all that.
Let me give you money, so I can focus on my project.
Yep. Alright. Okay, so this is the payment and lieu chart, and I gave some examples for everyone to be able to look at it. So, market rate, sale price. So if you're choosing to do the payment and lieu, instead of providing the affordable housing unit, you're going to, you're gonna pay this contribution for the market rate units that you sell. So, if it's under $400,000, it's $10,000, no matter what.
Per unit?
Per unit, yep, for each market rate unit.
Thank you.
If it's 401,000 to 600,000, it's 2.5% of the sale price for the market rate unit. And here are some examples of what they would be. So 500,000 would be 12,500, 600,000 would be 15,000. So, if now this is a step up here, so from 601,000 to 800,000, it's 3%. 700,000 would be 21,000, 800,000 would be 24,000. And then same with, you know, as we go higher, it's 3.5% if over 800,000. And these are the contributions. And so what this basically does is it does give an incentive for the developer to try to keep that number down and not, you know, go into the high 800,000s or even into, if they want to stay under the 600,000, because the contribution is not as high. So, taking this through.
We have a current project coming back to us, been around since 2004. Roughly 30 units, so I'm gonna round this out. And then the 800 or greater. So, we're looking at 30 times 31.5. Say the 900,000 units, right? So, I kept it that in my head because it's too many zeros at 8 o'clock at night. And so we get 30 times 31.5.
Big question.
Writes a check for 945,000. They write us a check for 945,000, okay? We can do something with that. We can buy a piece of land, we can build something. Now...
But we can put a bylaw in after the fact.
Oh, no, no, I think you should use that as an example. I mean, this is...
No, no, no.
No, 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 I agree with you, we cannot... I wanna walk down, I wanna walk down the line.
The Fields is gonna be the project.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna walk, hold on, I'm walking down the line, okay? They build us 30 units under $400,000 apiece, we get $300,000.
Well, if they do 30, they're gonna have to build the onsite units, it's over 20. They owe us the units no matter what, it's over 20.
Over 20, they have to provide the affordable unit. Cause we would rather have the affordable unit.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
But, if we're gonna get money for it, let's get someone that's gonna buy us something.
Right, I think that's gonna be, I think the way it's written is perfect. Because my question to you was, it's gonna be at the end of this, how do we negotiate with waivers or something? So all of this is negotiable with the planning boards, we're trying to get it.
Yes, yeah.
So, if your thesis is correct and someone who's in with 30 and they prefer not to build, we can waive the requirement of over 20. That's what I'm trying to get at.
But what I'm getting to is actually...
Are we stuck with it automatically or do you have any...
But what I'm getting to...
When a real world situation comes up, someone's gonna come in and say, I'd rather not do it, I'm building over 20. Can I just give you the money?
But I'm gonna ask, but it's...
You have to build them at that point.
The way it's written.
I noticed, that's, if we have, everywhere in our zoning regulations pretty much gives the...
Cause 30, so you would get three guys...
Three affordable units, yeah.
I want them to do the payment and lieu that's actually gonna make a difference. You got lost on my numbers as I made a simple example.
Yeah.
Okay? But, we live in a town where you can't acquire a piece of property for less than $500,000.
Yep.
Getting 50 grand is a nice gesture.
No, I think, I love it.
I want them to build me a unit. Sorry to say it.
Yeah.
And that's why I think the requirement is, hopefully...
When it comes to the planning, this is a limit to us again. Yeah, let's do the summary.
In regard to, in respect to the hour.
Yeah.
Let's see if we can move...
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, that's okay.
It's good.
So the density bonus, the planning board has the ability to do density bonuses. Basically, the way it works is, for every one additional affordable unit you're providing that is not required, so like if you're, here's the example. So if you have 10 housing units, you have to provide one affordable unit. If you give us two affordable units over that one, you get six market rate for a total of 18 units. And the bonus units are to offset costs for developers for those affordable housing units. Cause they do lose, they do lose some money on those because the costs, everything is the same, but...
They don't lose money.
No.
They...
But the costs are the same...
They utilize less money at the end of the process.
Yes, the costs are the same to build all the units, but they sell the unit at a lesser price.
We don't know what that's gonna happen.
So, if the density bonuses are for them to make that up.
Yeah.
Cause the price is set by the subsidizing agency.
Yep, correct. Yep, correct. Which is two hundred and ninety, two hundred and seventy something thousand. It's right around there.
Yep.
Alicia has the number. Okay, so that's the density bonus.
Right.
From that, we have two, um, definitions. Uh, the Mass Department, uh, Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, that's being changed to Executive Housing, uh, Executive Office of Housing in Living Communities. And then we're adding the addition, we are putting in the addition of the air affordable housing trusts. It's the definition that, um, uh, Janet gave me. So that's.
Jeff, cause we never had it. We kept referring to it, but we never had the definition of it.
So that is a, another amendment. It'll be its own section. It's section two of the definitions.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, MBTA bylaw.
Well, who's on it, but we don't, yeah.
We can add definition of a caretaker show?
Touching that section. All right.
Let it go.
So MBTA multifamily overlay district. I'm, I'm sure everyone knows about this one. We've been, you know, kind of dealing with this for quite a while. Um, basically, uh, this is to provide a zone that is within a mile radius, but it can, it can be further than a mile.
This makes us compliant.
It's within a mile, makes us compliant with the new MBTA Communities Act that was put in by, um, the, the state. Um, we are a transit, uh, an MBTA community, so we have to have this enacted by, uh, the end of this year. We have interim compliance. Uh, I just had a, the discussion with MRPC yesterday. They're gonna be updating our compliance model because there's a new model that came out with, but it, we still aren't meeting, we meet everything. It's just some definitions, some new, uh, mixed-use stuff. So we're fine. The, they'll be updating the compliance model. They updated the zoning map for me. And we, once we get this approved at town meeting, we should be in, uh, we'll be in compliance and then I can apply for, uh, full compliance at the end of the, uh, at,
Before the end of the year.
Yep. And so I'm not gonna get too into this because we can go at the next bylaw, but everyone has an idea of what this is. Uh, this is the zone, this is our sub-district one downtown Park Street. And then this is sub-district two, which is the West Air Main, uh, the West Main Air Village. Uh, so those are our two zones.
So. Never mind, never mind.
Yep.
So those two residential zones that are, yeah.
He's just overlaying them.
I understand what we're doing.
Yep.
But I, the colors are hard for me to see.
Yeah, so this is.
Crosshatching.
It's below, below.
Above shall pashar pond is not residential. That's what I'm saying.
No, that's a communications district.
This is, uh, light industry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah.
It's light industries, a non-residential district.
Correct. So this is our two zones.
So you'll have to add it down here too.
It is.
MBTA.
Well, legend's gonna be bigger than the map.
Yep, it's right there.
Cool.
Um, what, what does this do? We've already discussed. We do, we, we know what this does. Um, but this is to help for the select board so that they understand, um, and why, and the, the compliance, basically when we need to be in compliance, what, what community we are and why we need it. We don't want to lose state funding.
One of the things that might be helpful is being, is being able to say in no uncertain terms, our community receives grants in these amounts every year. And if we're not in compliance, no, in doll, the actual dollar amounts.
Oh.
In two thousand and twenty-three, we had this number in grants or in the last ten
I don't even know if I have that.
Varies.
We can get it. We can get it.
So.
It's a quick conversation with Barbara.
Yep, so I have like CDVG grant we receive. We use it for, to help seniors fix their houses when they have issues and many others. So, you know, and the West Main Street grant that we got from Mass Works for that whole rework. So, yeah, you know, those are some examples.
And we just, we just, we just redid the grant on Snakeville, on, um, Sandy Pond Road.
Yep.
This is all grant-based work, guys.
Yep.
So if people hear, you mean we're gonna lose millions of dollars every couple of years? Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and maybe more.
And, and we just have to make it compliant. We don't have to build anything.
Yeah.
We, and we, we. That's, that's the real reason.
The reason I say this, I can't speak on this issue at the town meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Someone's gonna have to.
Yeah. Yep. I'm ready for that. And that's it. Nathan wants to.
I'm sorry.
Is, is, do we have time to give a counterpoint?
Counterpoint?
My answer is yes, but I, I, I would ask as a favor to all of us that, yeah, that.
Try to. And you'll, and you'll remember, when we actually open the public hearing on September tenth, you'll have your, you'll also be able to.
Yeah, I understand too. We're gonna have Stratton Hill there and it'll be a long meeting as well. So I will, um, but I would like to at least make my colleagues aware that, um, I'm, I'm in favor long-term, meaning next year, of, uh, having an inclusionary bylaw rewrite. But, um, uh, I'm not, I'm not in favor of passing it right now. And I think the reason is, I like to give a little background. As Alicia pointed out last meeting, she, she mentioned that the middle class, um, is in decline and, uh, that, that we have a valuable resource in this town, which is our small A affordable homes. We have a lot of small A affordable homes. And I think, um, that is a benefit. It's, it's a resource like clean water, uh, like, um, open space we discussed earlier. So I think it's, it's worth considering to delay the adoption of the, um, inclusionary zoning bylaw in favor of what I would propose is a broader bylaw, um, such that there is affordability, um, that most residential developments, I'd be entertaining going below five, uh, would have an affordability component. And we give a clear choice to applicants to either have, as this, as the inclusionary does have, the capital A SHI sub-size house inventory or affordable housing trust contribution. Uh, you choose between that or, um, a small A affordable development. Um, the challenge is that a small A is legally hard to define.
So, well, so legally, I do, legally, I don't have the ability to put that into law.
Yeah.
Cause we are creating new law then.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
And I don't have, we don't have the ability to do that under the inclusionary housing bylaw. There is state law that gives us the precedent to do this, whereas what you're asking for, we don't have that state law to allow us to do that.
Correct. But somebody has to start. I think, uh, and one organization that might help us is the Sizent Housing and Plan Association. Um, in fact, they are the ones from the sixties or seventies who put forty B in place. So, um, I, I think if we had more time in the working group, we could invite somebody from, uh, Chappa, um, in to discuss. I'd just like to make four claims. One is, um, the, uh, well, let me just hit my, my, my bottom line of my claims, which is for development of five or more units, which is what we're talking about, the, um, and as, as Jeff, I think was, was, um, coming to conclusion, is that the inter, inclusionary zoning costs will, they, they are additional cost to the developer. And how is a developer gonna recover those costs, right? And, um, it is, it's, it's my opinion that these are gonna drive the, the cost of the other ninety percent of the homes up from the ten percent that they, they have to build. Um, and so you're gonna continue to see high-priced homes. But I'd just like to do is paint a picture of the, uh, the, uh, the economic diversity that we have here in air. Uh, I'll just start, Alicia showed a little of this last week and you were helpful, uh, Kathleen, in describing that these, as you get to the larger bars, I'll start with the blue bars. This is from the US Census data twenty-two. And you'll see I split the bars a bit arbitrarily. Um, the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar, uh, housing units here in air, there's twelve hundred and seventeen. And I've sort of split it sixty, forty, six hundred and change each to show potentially there's, there's six hundred homes that are under four hundred, there's six hundred homes that are under five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, then as you go, and then the federal government has, has five hundred to a million. That's just one lump. So I've taken quite a liberty to, uh, show how that might distribute. Um, six hundred thousand, seven hundred, just, just so that the chart has a little bit more of a sense of a distribution of housing in the town. I'm making some assumptions, but all I can say as a fact is that there are five hundred and forty-nine, uh, as of twenty-two, uh, housing units that are owner-occupied under mortgage. I should say that this, this chart does not cover rental units. Towns in Massachusetts are about one-third, two-thirds. So bump all these numbers up by about a third to get a sense of total housing in, uh, in our town.
Is this assessed or sale price?
I don't know. Yeah. Damn. Um, so the, and what median means is, is the half. So there's, there's twelve hundred, there's about thirteen hundred houses that are under five hundred thousand dollars in value. Um, and this is twenty-two, so those numbers are probably up, uh, six, eight, ten percent. The, yeah, the next thing I'd like to point out is that the eighty percent AMI is, uh, is a state number that just, just came, just came out recently. Eighty percent AMI is a hundred and, um, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a family of four. I'm just gonna use a family of four in this example. Uh, if a family of four at eighty percent AMI wants to purchase a house, the rule is that they should only spend thirty percent of their income. Thirty percent gives them about thirty, two hundred dollars a month to spend on their housing based on certain assumptions like six percent interest rate, ten percent down payment, et cetera. You can vary those. But I came up with a number of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house is what you could afford if you're in the eighty percent. Now, in air, the red line off to the, uh, left is the actual median household income here in air. This is published on the, the town of air website at a hundred and two thousand dollars. So median income in air doesn't even meet the eighty percent AMI currently. It's, it's closer to sixty percent AMI, uh, which means we have a lot of residents in this town that are considered, as, as Alicia said last week, low to, um, to very low. Uh, and, and therefore we need a lot of house, houses for them. There are, um, since that's the median, there are one thousand eight hundred forty-seven households. And household in air is two point two five people per household, uh, that need, need homes that are, that should be somewhere in the, in today's market in the mid three hundred thousand dollar range to purchase. And so I think there's a, and, and the thing is, we have these homes in our town. Um, and I think it's a, it's a valuable asset and we, we should continue to build them. One thing, um, in the last, one more data point on here to paint the picture is in the last five years, ninety-nine homes were built. This little green house, uh, um, object there at the six hundred thousand, there were nine hundred nine, there were ninety-nine homes built in the last five years, new home, new home construction. The average price of new home construction, uh, was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the last five years.
I think it's higher than that.
It's.
Average?
Average.
I don't think so. I think it's higher than that.
It's, um, I can, I can give you the source. This is from Redfin. Um, so it's a, uh, commercial source. The, the, and those houses are three-bedroom, two and a half bath and about almost just under two thousand square feet, nineteen hundred and forty-four square feet. Um, what, what I'm, um, I, I do have a concern that pursuing SHI exclusively, and even, even in your example, Jeff, with a million dollars, a million dollars on a thirty home project isn't going to build us three, uh, additional affordable homes. Um, and so I, I think that we should really consider, uh, a set of bylaws that allows for a developer to, if it can be defined, and that's the big if, uh, to choose lowercase A affordable homes, uh, in, in lieu of the SHI or affordable housing trust.
So I just, uh, just a couple things. So on that last note.
Wait, 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 let's find out. Nathan, did you finish?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did.
Uh, yeah, so, so with SHI, there are some good, good, um, outcomes from SHI. Uh, you can look up the, the Tidewater project in Salisbury and, uh, the YWCA in Salisbury Square. Um, and, uh, Lowell's doing, uh, acre crossing, um, at, uh, three hundred, three hundred and some thousand dollars per unit for a condo building with thirty-two condos. You know, there's, there's really a need. Here's, here's something that's really important. It is, there's, um, with SHI, um, there's a lady, uh, through Chappa who did a report in a presentation in twenty twenty. And, and in her report, one of the things that she identifies is that perpetuity is often not required in the deed. So the deed restriction is typically thirty years on an SHI home, which means
They come off.
Units roll off every thirty years. If you look at our numbers, our numbers are down, actually Salisbury numbers are down. Um, and it's, you know, if, if units are rolling off, you're chasing your tail trying to always get, uh, SHI in. So one of the recommendations I would have in a, in a broader rewrite of the, the bylaw is to incentivize or require perpetuity, um, so that we aren't, uh, always trying to build into this pool. Um, be interesting if that's a, a wise idea. Um, many, many SHI, um, are segregated. Actually, uh, I don't know if these are SHI, but the, um, when you go down Westford Road, there's, there's units right by Shaw's that are, um, part of Mr. Moulton's project over there, but aren't onsite, right? They are, that is an example of.
They're offsite.
Houses being offsite. And they don't look like the homes that are onsite. Um, and I think that we should, um, uh, at least, I would value having homes where the, um, there is a mix of, um, socioeconomic strata within, within our neighbors. Certainly something that, that I value. Uh, the, um, so I think, what would I recommend? Um, if we, if we did get an opportunity to continue to, to work on the inclusionary zoning bylaw, uh, that would be, um, I think payment in lieu should be an exception. It should be a strong exception. We, we want the homes. We want to have the homes built. Uh, and I would say we want to have capital A or lowercase a. Um, so, so I'd rather see, uh, the cost structure being, being pretty strong, maybe, maybe just a flat, uh, even a flat three and a half percent. The, um, uh, I would replace the fixed dollar amounts in the current write-up. I think fixed dollar amounts will become dated, uh, pretty quickly, especially in today's market. And the, um, the density bonus, it does say in the bylaw that, uh, in the proposed inclusionary zoning bylaw that we will, um, have guidelines written, right, which we, we do for most of our bylaws. Um, but in this case, in contrast to the existing, um, inclusionary zoning bylaw, it talks about dimensional requirements, right? It says the board shall be able to, uh, manipulate dimensional requirements. Uh, there's no language in the current, uh, bylaw that talks about the levers that the board has to offer these density, the, the density bonus. Uh, and further the density bonus, it says you may offer it. So there's, the other, um, problem I see is that there isn't a deterministic uh, outcome for the applicant. And as you can see even tonight, it's, it's, it's concerning when an applicant comes, uh, before the board and there's ambiguity about what their, uh, what the cost structure is going to be for their project. Um, so I think that that, that should be sharpened in, in it. So I recommend that, um, the, uh, you know, the inclusionary zoning, um, working group continue to work on this. Um, it's something that I don't think is at a point where I would be in favor of, um, of voting for it. And I think, um, it's worth considering that as, as we come up to the next meeting, whether or not the board should, uh, support it.
Thank you. When is the public, when you anticipate the public hearing, the September tenth meeting?
We've already put the.
Okay, it's on there, right? Because we need that in order to make our, our.
Yeah.
So just a couple of things. Um, I, I, I know where Nathan is coming from on this. Um, but, uh, the working group as, as a whole has agreed that they feel that the bylaw as it's written is where they wanted to move forward with.
Do you remember what the vote was in the working group?
So I believe Nathan was the only dissenting person. Um, also, uh, just a couple of points that, um, that Nathan had raised. So prices, uh, market rate units are set by the market. The developer does not set the market, set the market. The mark, the developer builds a unit and sells it at what the market is. So we can't control that. We can't control what the market is. We know that the market is going higher, but that's not something that us as a town can control. We can, and that's what this bylaws kind of to do, is what it really is to do, is to make sure that we're still providing, even though it may be ten percent, we're still providing the affordable units. Because currently, our. Because currently, our bylaw does not work. And I will say that has not been used in eight years. I feel that this bylaw, the way as it, as it is written, should, will make a big change. And the, the properties that this would affect, there's, um, there's only, there's not a lot of land left in air that, that can be developed. So this really only triggers on, you know, those bigger parcels, West Main Street, maybe something on, on the downtown Park Street. The, the, uh, the Hudland property, um, you know, stuff like that. The, what, what Nathan is asking about market rate affordable units, like the three hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand, even that in those areas. Charlie and I have stated that we feel that that market rate affordable, little a, should be dealt outside of this bylaw as a cottage bylaw, more of a small home, I know Charlie doesn't like that word, but small cottage style, eight hundred square foot, nine hundred thousand square feet. I think that's where that bylaw should come from, and where the market, the affordable market rate units, where it's the three hundred thousand, the four hundred thousand square, um, costs. Legally, we cannot put that in this bylaw, because this is based on state law, what is allowed. I don't, I also need to get this changed for the MBTA as well, because of the, the percentage we have within our bylaw. So we need to change that as well. Not that, that's the, you know, hinging point, but like, there are, I think that the way it is written now is, is ten times better than what we currently have. And it, it does, I understand the, the argument that, you know, it, it, it doesn't do everything we want it to do, but I can't write a bylaw that's not legally, that has legal backing, to do something that we hope we can do, to get it kicked back by the AG. This is a bylaw that's been proved, been, you know, gone through by the AG and approved before. The, the ti, the affordable port, the market rate portion of creating that three hundred, four hundred thousand portion is really in the cottage bylaw, which Charlie and I have been talking about, and Janet has been talking about as well. And we were hoping to, we want to get that for spring town meeting. So that's, I think, where that argument, where we would have deal, would deal with that, um, as, uh, for that issue.
I would just say that I'm in favor of the cottage bylaw. I just, what I'm proposing is that we present them together because I think that what, what we, we're discussing in the working group is that the cottage bylaw would strike ten point three, and that you'd be able to override ten point three if you, if you have it. So if that's the way it comes out, then, uh, then I think we would get a, a good outcome.
I appreciate hearing the multiple sides of the argument. I'm gonna suggest that.
Is there an argument or is there?
Discussion, whatever you want to call it, I call it argument, I didn't mean it in the negative sense of it, people making their arguments.
I'm actually intrigued by this.
I am, I am too, but I am fading. And, um, and I recognize that we can continue this, that we have more opportunity to discuss this, that this isn't final. And I would ask that, can we close this for tonight, get the vote on the meeting minutes? And then we can pick this up, is that fair?
Yeah, so that September tenth, we'll be opening the public hearing on this.
And also, would you, Nathan, would you be willing to share some of your documents, put them, uh, with the board members, please?
Sure.
That you have me.
Doesn't have to share them with me.
Okay.
And it, it, actually, I, I would, I, I know you asked a question. So affordable housing is a challenge we have, and I just want to say this. If we incent people to build houses at four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year, we give up twenty-four percent of our taxable, of our tax base on those properties. That's all I'm gonna say.
It's a big discussion.
It's a big discussion.
Upon which our CPC funds rely and other things.
It's a big discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Nathan.
So we have, uh, the meeting minutes on August thirteenth, are we motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote, Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Have a say.
Have a say. Chair votes, uh.
You can handle it.
Aye, and, uh, I motion to adjourn.
I want to thank everyone.
Thank you.